Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it's your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface.
With that said, we'll go ahead and move to the agenda proper, and I'll ask first for a roll call. I'll go ahead and then ask for. For the first one, have that done, please.
Yeah. Commissioner Leo?
Here.
Mr. Godwin?
Present.
Mr. Ferguson?
Present.
Mr. Hauser?
Yeah.
Mr. Dormer?
Present.
Chair Nibblin?
Present. Great, thank you. I guess then we'll go ahead and move to salute to the flag and maybe Commissioner Ferguson, you could lead us aside this evening and salute to the flag. I would love to. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
For the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. We'll then move to administrative business, and the first item of administrative business is to approve the order of agenda. I'll ask if there is a motion to approve the order of agenda. Commissioner Leo?
I'll make a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Leo to approve the order of agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Damarat has seconded the motion. Can we go ahead and get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. Dormer?
Yes.
Chair Nibblin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Leo?
Yes. Thank you. That was unanimously approved. That will take us then to approval of minutes, and we have our minutes from the meeting of August 2nd, 2021, for our review and approval. I'll ask if there are any comments, questions with respect to the minutes of our August 2nd, 2021 meeting and/or whether there's.
Recording in progress.
So again, any, any questions, comments or with respect to the minutes or for that matter, a motion? Commissioner Godwin?
I move we approve the minutes as written.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Godwin to approve our minutes of August 2nd, 2021. Mr. Hauser?
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Dormer?
Yes.
Mr. Godwin?
Yes.
Chair Nibblin?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes. Thank you. Unanimously approved.
And through the chair, I failed to recognize that Commissioner Berman is absent today.
Thank you. Thank you. So noted. So the, the next item is designation of liaison to city council meeting, and it appears that we don't need that this evening. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. So then we'll move to oral communications, and this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes, so I'll, I'll ask staff to help us ascertain whether or not we have any oral communications this evening.
I see one hand raised. Ms. Christine Bowles, I'll go ahead and allow her to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Bowles?
And just for the record, I am doing this, I don't do this typically, so I'm going to time. Go ahead and time the person, and then I will let them know when their time is up.
Thank you. Actually, I'd ask maybe you could flag it when they're, I don't know, 30 seconds out as well, just so. Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Please go ahead.
Ms. Bowles, you should be unmuted now.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Christine Bowles, and I'm a licensed architect living in the Manor District. I'd like to start by encouraging you to watch the recording from the August 9th city council hearing for the Harmony 1 Lot 3 appeal. As you may know, there were four of us opponents, myself, Dinah Burby, Summer Lee, and Richard Campbell. Richard was the planning commissioner at the time the subdivision was approved back in 2007. Rich, recall these planning commission hearings, he said, and I quote, "The hearings were standing room only. There was a lot of public interest, probably the most I've seen in my 13 years as a planning commissioner, aside from meetings about development in the quarry." And why was that? Because the development was a test of our HPD. Pacifica prizes its open space. That's why people love living here and invest in our town. And it's what makes Pacifica different than towns we are surrounded by. The project that you all approved on April 5th did not comply with HPD, approximately doubling the amount of allowed coverage while ignoring the prominent ridgeline designation and its requirements in the general plan. Several subdivision conditions of approval were also missing from the analysis, including the requirement of a leadfold checklist. The four of us worked with the owner and his engineer for four months to change the project and bring it into compliance with these regulations. Since the revised project now complied, we waived the other appeal grounds and limited the appeal to the lead issue to simplify the process for staff and the city council at the required public hearing. We're hopeful that our work helps you and the planning department to do a more thorough job reviewing the next projects that come before you in the subdivision, so that we can avoid future appeals that relate solely to compliance with our laws. Speaking of HPD, I believe the Talbot project is coming before you again at the next planning commission hearing on September 20th. I know several of you have been asking for public meetings with the planning department and city council to better understand the nuances of the HPD ordinances. Thank you. I and many members of the public are curious as to whether there's been any progress in setting up this meeting. Also, I filed a public document request for all the past projects that applied for HPD variances to better understand when the variances were considered and approved or denied in the past. Unfortunately, the city is very far behind and not in compliance with state law. I'm providing other documents I, as a mere citizen, request. So I'm not confident that I will get these in time before the hearing. I'm hoping that one of you may have time to look into.
Thirty, thirty seconds.
I'm hoping that one of you may have time to look into this issue. The current Lindemar Woods application is also asking for waivers or variances to HPD. And it's time critical that we all understand what criteria can be used to consider a variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Do we have any further public comment under oral communication?
I do not see any more hands.
Thank you. We'll then go ahead and move off of oral communication then, and I'll note that we have no consent items, which then will take us to our new public hearing for this evening, which is DP 8321, file number 202103, Development Plan DP 8321, filed by property owner GRI Fairmont LLC, looking for approval of a master use list in accordance with the provisions for the planned development zoning district in the existing Fairmont Shopping Center, which is located at the intersection of Hickey Boulevard and Gateway Drive in Pacifica. The recommended CEQA action with respect to this item is a class and categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15 through 01 of the CEQA guidelines. And staff's recommended action is that we adopt a resolution to recommend city council approval of a development plan. I will ask staff for a report on the site, please.
Chair Nibblin, I, this is Tina Waremeister, Planning Director and Assistant City Manager. I wanted to introduce consultants from Good City Company, that this is going to be, I believe, their first commission meeting, presenting to you all. So I wanted to introduce Aaron, sorry if I'm going to pronounce your name wrong, Aaron, Aaron Aiken?
Hello, Sacken.
And Mr. Jacob Garcia, who will present the staff report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Waremeister, and welcome, Mr. Aken and Mr. Garcia. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm gonna start by sharing my screen. May I please have permissions to share my screen?
Perfect. You should have permission now.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jake Garcia. I am a consulting planner for the city of Pacifica. The item before the planning commission tonight is consideration of a request for approval of a master use list in accordance with the provisions for the planned development or PD zoning district for the existing Fairmont Shopping Center. The applicant was submitted, or the application was submitted by the property owner, GIR, GRI Fairmont LLC. We'll start first with the site background. The project site is a seven and a half acre contiguous site consisting of five parcels. The site is located at the corner of Hickey Boulevard and Gateway Drive. Located within the Fairmont neighborhood, the project site's general plan land use designation is commercial and is own PD plan development. Surrounding land uses are primarily multifamily residential housing to the north, west, and south. Other commercial uses are located to the south at the intersection of Hickey Boulevard and Gateway Drive. The Skyline Boulevard, State Route 35, roadway and public right of way bound the Fairmont Shopping Center to the east. Most surrounding buildings are one and two-story structures. Background on the project is the the Fairmont Shopping Center has developed, was developed in the 1960s and under prior under ownership underwent significant renovations between 2015 and 17. The Fairmont Shopping Center contains approximately 107,000 square feet of building floor area, and there are currently 29 tenant spaces with most spaces dedicated to retail, restaurant, and personal service tenants. A Safeway grocery store and Rite Aid pharmacy are the anchor tenants in the shopping center, and the project site currently provides 330 standard and 16 disabled parking spaces for a total of 346 parking spaces. The city's current PD is zoned, or zoning regulations in the Pacifica Municipal Code were enacted after the development of the Fairmont Shopping Center. The planned development zoning regulations require city council approval of a development plan to specify the allowable uses on the property's own PD. However, staff has been unable to locate any prior city approval of a development plan for the Fairmont Shopping Center to designate allowable uses. As such, in order to facilitate efficient operation of the shopping center, the new owner is seeking approval of a development plan to ensure its operation of the Fairmont Shopping Center is compliant with the Pacifica Municipal Code. The request before each night, the applicant has proposed a development plan that would serve as a master use list for the Fairmont Shopping Center and is included in attachment B of the staff report. The master use list is primarily based on the C2 community commercial zoning district permitted and conditional uses, which is currently used to review and approve prospective tenants. The C2 zoning provisions were last comprehensively updated nearly 40 years ago, and since then, the type of uses associated with successful shopping centers has changed, and as such, the proposed master use list also contains additional provisions to reflect contemporary and anticipated uses within the shopping center. The applicant has prepared a parking and transportation study to accompany the development plan application, and will be discussed later in this presentation. As I have just stated, the proposed master use list is based primarily from the permitted and conditional uses of the C2 community commercial zoning provisions. I'll take some time to summarize how the master use list differs from the current provisions now. For health and fitness uses, C2 zoning standards require all health and fitness uses to obtain a use permit, whereas the proposed master use would allow smaller health and fitness use up to 5,000 square feet in floor area as a permitted use. Therefore, a use permit approval would not be required. Health and fitness uses in excess of 5,000 square feet in floor area in each unit would continue to require a use permit. Such uses would be limited to a total of 25,000 square feet for the entire shopping center. For childcare facilities, current C2 standards require a use permit for all childcare facilities. The proposed master use list would allow, as a permitted use, childcare facilities with up to 30 children and not more than two such uses in the entire shopping center. Larger childcare facilities or more than two facilities within the shopping center would require approval of a use permit. For vehicle and boat sales, current C2 standards require a use permit for vehicle and boat sales. However, the proposed master use list would allow such sales as a permitted use, provided they occur only indoors. For restaurant and food related uses, an overall cap of 20,000 square feet would be applied to the center, where C2 standards do not include an overall floor area limitation for the property. For outdoor seating, the master use list would establish standards for outdoor dining and allow a small amount of outdoor dining area as a permitted use for each food-related use. Currently, all outdoor uses in a commercial district require a use permit approval, including outdoor dining areas except as permitted by the city's outdoor activities permit process enacted during the COVID-19 public health emergency. The city council is scheduled to consider citywide policy related to outdoor sitting areas in the coming months, and the proposed outdoor seating provisions in this development plan are being considered before the council has determined an appropriate citywide policy. For renewable energy structures, the master use list would allow solar panels, energy storage devices such as batteries, and electrical vehicle charging stations and other alternative energy structures. While not discussed, discussed in the C2 standards, renewable energy structures are commonly found in similar shopping centers and are increasingly required by the California Building Standards Code. For e-commerce pickup, the master use list would allow for e-commerce pickup areas, this type of use was not contemplated in the C2 standards, but is appropriate in the Fairmont Shopping Center because it provides a convenience for visitors to the shopping center and those living in the area. Secure e-commerce pickup areas could be particular convenience to residents in the several multifamily residential developments in the vicinity of the Fairmont Shopping Center, because they may lock sufficient areas to conceal e-commerce deliveries to deter theft. Next, we'll go into the transportation and parking study. In support of the development plan and proposed master use list, the applicant submitted a transportation and parking study, and has been incorporated into the staff report as attachment C. This study consists of a vehicle trip generation analysis and parking capacity study. The vehicle trip analysis examines potential traffic impacts while the parking study examines whether adequate parking is available onsite. The transportation and parking study examines existing conditions and multiple land use scenarios. The proposed master use list reflects the hybrid scenario analyzed in the study. The hybrid scenario reflects future land uses distributed among a variety of use types rather than emphasizing concentration in any specific type of use. First, we'll discuss in detail the transportation study as analyzed under the proposed scenario conditions and displayed on your screen in the vehicle trip summary table. The weekday PM peak hour trip increase would be approximately 3%, and the weekend PM peak hour trip increase would be approximately 9%. The increases in weekday and weekend peak hour vehicle trips is relatively small compared to the overall number of trips already generated by land uses in the vicinity of the project site. With respect to the parking study, the shopping center currently includes 346 parking spaces. And per the city's off-street parking standards, the Fairmont Shopping Center would require 500 parking spaces or 150 more spaces than currently provided based on the existing land uses. However, the parking study revealed that the highest observed parking usage was 245 spaces or a 71% utilization on weekdays, and 287 spaces or an 83% utilization on Saturdays. Thus, the existing parking supply adequately supports the existing land use mix. The off-street parking table summarizes the projected change in off-street parking utilization under the proposed master use list applying the hybrid scenario. The 346 existing off-street parking spaces can handle the projected increase in off-street parking utilization during both weekday and weekend peak hour conditions under the hybrid scenario. Therefore, staff does not anticipate an adverse impact in off-street parking availability in the master use if the master use list is approved. Excuse me. Additional parking components have been incorporated into the development plan and include 15-minute parking requirements. The application includes a proposal to utilize eight to 12 existing off-street parking spaces for ride-share pickup and drop-off and app-based delivery services. There is a 15-minute parking limit for these spaces. The short-term parking component reflects the increasing popularity of ride-sharing and on-demand delivery services by identifying appropriate locations for such services within the existing off-street parking area. There is also an incorporation of ongoing transportation study requirements. While the transportation study did not identify any potentially adverse impacts from the master use list in terms of vehicle trip generation and off-street parking capacity, the development plan would include a safeguard provision to enable the city to revisit traffic and parking concerns as necessary in the future, should any operational challenges relating to parking occur. The proposed development plan includes a provision to allow the planning director to require the property owner to conduct a parking study periodically, but no more than once every two years in the event the planning director has determined that the combination of uses authorized in the development plan is creating conditions detrimental to surrounding uses in terms of off-street parking demand. Pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code, Section 9 dash, excuse me, 9 dash 4.2206, the project requires planning commission consideration and recommended approval of the development plan to the city council. City council approval is required to adopt the development plan and master use list for the Fairmont Shopping Center. The commission, after a public hearing, may recommend to the city council the establishment or amendment of a planned development zoning district, provided they find that the development plan is consistent with the findings. All public noticing requirements have been fulfilled, and staff has received one comment to date, and that was from a current tenant who's raised concerns about the proposed master use list, and the comments have been shared with the planning commission tonight. Staff determined that the project is consistent with the required findings as outlined in the staff report and find that the proposed development plan and master use list would support continued successful operation of the existing Fairmont Shopping Center. Minor additional uses would be allowed at the shopping center based on the current market, market conditions and evolving commercial uses since the last comprehensive update to the city's C2 community commercial zoning regulations in 1982. The proposed development plan and master use list would be consistent with the general plan, and staff has not identified any adverse impacts that would, would require or would occur from the planning commission recommending the development plan's approval by the city council. On your screen reads the formal recommended motion, and city staff and the applicant team is available to answer any questions. The applicant team has also prepared a presentation for the planning commission tonight. Thank you, and I yield back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I'll go ahead and ask whether you have any questions from members of the commission at this point, from Mr. Garcia or Mr. Aken, clarifications, questions. Commissioner Leo?
Thank you, Chair. I did have one question. On the, let's see, under the conditional uses, number 13 was left blank. I was just wondering, that was intentional or there should be a condition 13 for the uses?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I noticed that report. Was that, was that just an extra number that was left on the list?
I believe that was a clerical error.
Yeah. That was inadvertently left blank.
So there are only 12. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, my, my concern with the initial statement was about the renewable energy structures standard. It seems overly broad to me. It, you know, there's a lot of battery chemistries currently being researched and, you know, companies are putting in $10 billion or more into this kind of thing, and a lot of different technologies could, could become available during the life of, life of this environment. Also, the voltages in the drivetrains are going way up and as the amperages, so the charging stations have to be much more powerful than even Tesla superchargers that are widely available today. It would seem to me would make sense if we're looking at approving this thing to set some limits on the size of the chargers and the type of technologies that are involved. Don't have any issue with photovoltaic panels or current electric vehicle chargers that we understand.
Thank you, Commissioner. Maybe, maybe some clarification from Mr. Garcia with respect to what exactly we're talking about with respect to the renewable energy uses that are described before.
Sure, I could jump in and then Jake, feel free to add on. I think we were, you know, staff as well as the consultant team was thinking of more traditional energy, renewable energy sources, so your charging stations, your solar panels. It is true, we can't contemplate everything that's, you know, that will be developed in the future. But I will say is that everything would have to go through a typical building code process. So if it's not allowed by the California Building Code, then it wouldn't be allowed onsite. And there are safety precautions built in within, within the building code in order to make sure that it is safe for folks to use and be out there. But we'd certainly open to the planning commission if there are no limits that we, we could place on this. I just can't think of any at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Godwin, anything else?
No, that was my primary concern.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser?
Thank you, Chair. I had two questions. One was brought to mind by one of the couple of comments that we received, and I wanted to understand from staff if firearm sales was included because it was a use that's currently allowed under C2? And if that's a use that the other Pacifica shopping centers have as a permitted use?
My understanding, yes, that is a use that's currently, this is consistent with the C2 type requirements. I'm unaware whether or not there are currently gun shops that are in ammunition shops and other centers right now, but that's something certainly we could look, look into. But generally, what we tried to do is mirror what's in the C2 zoning districts since that's historically been applied to the site.
And just to clarify.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, just to, just to clarify. It is in there to be consistent with C2, and it is in there as a conditional use, so not permitted. So just like in other C2 shopping centers, they would need to get a use permit. They could not just locate there with a business license.
And the use permit process, Assistant City Manager, can you just explain that a little bit better?
Sure. The use permit process is a discretionary review process that would require a planning commission review. It also requires public noticing. So similar to the noticing required for this item tonight. So, so there would be due process and community engagement.
And thank you for that. And then my only other question was on the traffic study that was done. Did that contemplate the conditional uses that were listed as well, or does that happen later with that conditional discretionary entitlement?
So the traffic study itself, the answer is yes, it did take into consideration the likely, you know, mixture of uses that could include a certain amount of conditional uses. That said, every time you go through a discretionary type permit, you do go through a CEQA process. So if it was something that the city contemplated would generate a lot of traffic, you could require that the applicant do a traffic study at that time as well, because it's discretionary process.
Do you, do you happen to know what type of residential was contemplated in the current traffic study? And I appreciate what you're saying about a future CEQA process, more, more for my own edification at this point.
You know, that, that might be a question for the applicant team as they, they were more involved in the details of that. My, my, you know, I would say that they more, more likely contemplated the commercial conditional uses rather than the residential commercial uses, or rather than the residential uses. Because if you did propose any residential onsite, you certainly are going to be doing a traffic study along with that.
Okay. Thank you for that. Those were my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. I had one, one question myself, and I'm guessing the answers, the longer lines of answers I've heard already, but I just wanted to confirm. I noted that vehicle and boat sales were among the sort of identified uses, and I don't think those were conditional. I think those are basically limited uses. And I'm curious, does C2 actually contemplate vehicle sales, boat sales? They strike me as being a little bit different, sort of in well, potential impact.
Sure. So C2. Sure, so uh, C two does include those uses as a conditional use. And um, I'm guessing part of that is the typically a large amount of what's where they would show room is outdoors in the parking area, which is why we clarified here that if there were to be that type of business uh, in the center, it would need to be indoors. And I think that's the um, part of the um the desire to uh, make this a more contemporary master useless as you're starting to see some of those more frequently, maybe not super frequently, but a little bit more frequently in shopping centers where there's indoor vehicle sales or at least a, a small showroom.
Well, I've seen the Tesla sort of um, showroom down at Stanford, I think, for example, and that's kind of indoor. I'm sort of curious about whether or not there's like test driving and things like that that um, typically take place even when they're sort of all indoors. I'm, I'm, I'm again a little concerned about what those impacts might be like.
Sure, that's a good question. I, I would hope that the applicant can answer that.
Okay, thank you. That, that was, that was my question. Um, I don't see other hands, so I think then what we'll do is go ahead and move on then to uh, to hear from the applicant. I think our ordinary practice would be to afford the applicant um, ten minutes to um present any matters that the applicant wants to present, recognizing the applicant reserve, to reserve some of that time to excuse me, address any, you know, questions or comments that might come up when we hear from the, the public more broadly. So um, I guess at this point then we'll, we'll go ahead and afford the applicant the opportunity to address us uh, if they're ready to go.
I can do that. Um, I need to know who is representing the applicant for their first, their ten minutes.
Um, we have Greg Zeig, um, will be doing the presentation and then the applicant team will also consist of um, Brandon Northart and Curtis Banks. And they can identify anyone else on the applicant team who needs to be appointed.
So I believe I have the applicant team who aren't able to speak and uh, Mr. Garcia is going to uh, go ahead and run the slideshow and promote the slides uh, when they're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Zeig. Well, we'll go ahead. Do you intend to use all ten minutes? Would you like to, to hear when you've got you know, two minutes left?
Yeah, Mr. Garcia did a fabulous job of kind of laying out the uh, development plan. So I think it'll actually be a pretty quick uh, little run-through with just a couple of comments. I'll respond to the four questions that came up and then uh, there'll be time at the end, so. I appreciate it. So uh, first of all, um, Greg Zeig, First Washington Realty, do you need uh, an address? No. Okay, um. Wonderful. So thank you so much, uh, Commissioners for uh, your time this evening. Uh, we purchased uh, the Fairmont Shopping Center in twenty nineteen uh, and are very excited to be part of your community. Um, this plan, uh, and the, the process of the development plan actually happened initially during due diligence. Um, and then the, the facts of the last eighteen months kind of slowed us down. We were probably ninety percent done back in March of twenty twenty. Uh, so we appreciate you uh, working with us on putting this schedule uh, back later uh, than originally planned. So uh, once again, Mr. Garcia, thank you so much for the review. Uh, I'm gonna actually bang through these first few slides relatively quickly and then we'll talk about why we're here. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, these are all the same items Mr. Garcia said. Uh, next slide, please. As I said, we purchased the property in August of twenty nineteen. We're currently at about a ninety-three percent occupancy rate. We provide about two hundred and twenty jobs to the, the local community. Uh, and as was referenced earlier, Safeway and Ride Aid are the anchor tenants. Next slide, please. Um, it is zoned for PD, uh, but no records are on file, so that came up during the initial due diligence, which is why we started this process. Um, using C two zoning has raised challenges for prospective tenants. Um, Commissioner Hauser, you, you raised earlier what that process looks like. We did have a uh, you know, like a um, youth educational and dance type uh, location that was looking to be here, but it was gonna be a uh, a single proprietor who the process was just too broad and too um, too lengthy and too expensive for her to want to uh, take on for a relatively small shop space. So she ended up going somewhere else. And so this really is why we want to do this and why we are requesting these list of uses is so that that uh, that young local professional um, can do those things and have the landlord take some of the responsibility on getting these uh, uses permitted initially as opposed to being conditionally. So, uh, next slide, please. As I said, we, we do want to provide flexibility for future market conditions. Uh, Mr. Nebelen, I'll, I'll hit on your item. Um, Tesla dealerships inside, they don't do test drives out of their uh, out of those locations. I'm not saying they never will, right? I, I ever, it's, we, I don't think we would have thought we were gonna buy cars out of shopping malls uh, twenty years ago. But they currently don't. We do have some of those nationally in our portfolio. And um, they have zero uh, parking impact over and above any kind of standard retailer, actually less parking impact than most retailers due to the small number of peoples that, that kind of purchase cars. Um. We, boats was kind of in the same category, but all just to address it. Um, I, I'm not sure boats will ever be sold inside. Um, but uh, it, it came as kind of a package geovehicle and boat sales interior and so we kept it in there, but that, that's what we're thinking. Um, it would not be um, as I said, it, it wouldn't be test drives and those kind of things. Um, the next bullet there is to simplify the approval process for the tenants. Once again, that really is our goal. We're ninety-two point six percent today. We want to increase the occupancy. We want to increase, especially in this market, keeping the center vibrant and keeping those storefronts uh, full. And so we think this is a great way to do it with uses that are already part of the C two uh, approved list, just but on the conditional side. So we just want to shift a few of those over to the uh, to the permitted side. Next slide, please. Uh, Mr. Garcia hit on these, but let me just talk more about the status quo. There's no grading, there's no construction, there's no modification, the number of spaces. Continued use of the existing sign program. A lot of these things would normally be part of a development plan. Um, all those things will stay the same. Uh, it really is a master use list and outdoor dining standards and authorization for these short-term parking spaces. Uh, Ms. Hauser, let me um, address your item. We did not address residential. That was a conditional item. We are, we are not looking. It also came up actually in the uh, in the open comment. Um, that was already part of C two. We kept it on the, the, you know, like on the list, but that uh, we did not, um, we don't envision that and we did not account for either traffic or parking related to uh, those uses. Um, next slide, please. You know, it, a lot of the same, right? Uh, heavily inspired by the C two zoning uses. It does place square footage restrictions on the most intensive of the uses. We did a lot of math and talked to a lot of leasing brokers and experts and really tried to picture the right mix of what these tenants look like uh, moving forward. Um, with the understanding that we do want people to be able to come into the center and find a parking spot easily. Um, there are a lot of options for people to go and so we want to make it a vi- vibrant uh, center, but also one that people can pull in and, and find a parking spot. Um, it does permit those auto services, but only at the site currently occupied one. So that was a uh, a prior, I believe, non-conforming use um, that we're shifting to, to a permitted use, but only in that single building. And then we also added some specific location requirements for certain uses. Good example is in the back at three oh five Hickey. Uh, for most folks that know this center, they might not even know there's a space back there. Uh, it was prior, possibly an office space and storage. We think there's gonna be a future possibility for that with a very low traffic. Uh, you know, type use, not a normal retail use, but we're, we're looking to, to think about some options for back there. So we hit that um, buy space with some additional uses. Next slide, please. In the last piece, I just, you know, I mentioned it. We did study several land use scenarios. Uh, we always talk about it pulling the various levers and we did that here. Um, which all informed our final use list and where our capacities felt comfortable. Um, and where our vehicle trips felt comfortable. Next slide, please. Uh, thank you very much for your time. Uh, available for any uh, questions and like uh, like Mr. Garcia said, we also have our local urban planning partners uh, available to answer any technical questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Zeig. I think what we'll do, um, as is our ordinary practice, then is go ahead and shift to um, here from the public, uh, insofar as we have any public comment, uh, you know, regarding this particular item and then we will bring it back to the commission and it's quite possible at that point, Mr. Zeig, we may have questions for you to, after we've had a chance to to get in from the public. So, I mean, Mr. Meister, I guess I'd ask for your assistance to, to see whether we have a public comment on the side of it.
Sure, we have three hands raised. Um, so first speaker is uh, Vicky.
Vicky, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Vicky Sunstrom. I'm a traffic and transportation professional. Um, I've been reviewing these plans and I'm actually pretty excited to hear about possible changes coming up to the, to where I do all my shopping. So I, I really am excited to see something happening there. Um, I have lived in Pacifica for twenty years and drive by that area every day. So I had a clear understanding of what I was reading when I read the transportation report. Uh, and I wanted to kind of um, I had some notes that I made and I'm just gonna read them out to you. Um, the traffic study that was provided by Kittleson um, does not include a number of elements required for such a report. The existing trip data collection methodology was not provided. It does, it does make mention of baseline data or existing data, which I saw mentioned in I think one of the presentations, but it does, it's not clear on where that come from, came from. And there's no traffic counts provided to substantiate that information. Likewise, the parking utilization data collection method was not provided. Um, the traffic, the traffic and conditions around the center have changed considerably since the nineteen sixties. Numerous traffic issues exist around the access egress of this facility and we see this every day. Um, some of the data collection was done during the school break. Um, there's mention of the um, February fifteenth, I think, and that week I, I went and looked it up and the schools were out that week, which means there's potential that families were out of town, so the data would not be correct that was collected then. Um, moving on, uh, the report does not include existing traffic conditions and the project impacts to exist, to the existing traffic conditions. We're not talking about what's onsite, but the roadways along the, the strip mall. Um, the traffic counts, the peak hour, turning volumes were not provided, lane geometry, traffic control information and impacts that have um, and impacts have not been provided or evaluated. Any additions to traffic will impact everything on the roadway around that mall. And like I said, we're already seeing issues today, so adding whatever you're adding is, is going to add to an area that already has a problem. And unfortunately, this specific mall and the egress from this mall is the key, are the key problems on Gateway as well as Hickey. Um, the V M T analysis, which is required, I believe, by Sequoia.
Thirty seconds.
Um, the street queuing backup and impacts, the, the traffic backups, Highway thirty-five is also not addressed. Um, both the intersections at Gateway and Hickey and Highway thirty-five and Hickey would have to be addressed in the analysis. Um, that's everything I've got on, in my notes, so thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Uh, next speaker, please.
Next, we have uh, Mr. Stedgen.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yep, please go ahead.
Excellent, thanks. I'm just gonna bring up a couple aspects of this parcel. Um, interesting, originally in the early nineteen sixties, there was a live monkey cage in the parking lot there that's visible on some photos. Um, it appears the, all the shopping center master plans and master use lists disappeared sometime in the summer of twenty thirteen. Um, they're all still available. Some registered with the county, some registered with the parcels themselves to the title company. You can still access these and I urge the Commissioners to make any decisions contingent on the presentation of the actual most recent recorded master useless or master use plan by any applicant within the uh, ten-day period. Um, the uh, First Washington is based in Bethesda, Maryland, the uh, hometown of the Pentagon. So it wouldn't surprise me if they have some different um, beliefs about what guns and are uh, appropriate in uh, shopping centers that are essentially servicing dense neighborhoods on all three sides. The, the fourth side is the highway there. Uh, I'm telling you a little story about a um, about a gun store uh, in its first week when it was open. Um, this was a gun store in California. The uh, it was rammed by Mercedes-Benz. Um, the, the driver went into the gun store, liberated some shotguns, had brought ammunition with them and began shooting the shotguns inside the building. And you ask why that might be relevant to Pacifica and it's because the responding sergeant was Dan Stidle, who is now the captain. Sorry, Chief Stidle here. And that gun shop was actually in the city of Pacifica in two thousand and five. So there is a history of these things going awry, the best intentions sometimes to you. Um, I was just gun sales not be allowed at this location. Any vehicle sales by the state of California require um separate delineated display spots for any licensed dealers. I think it's two per licensed dealer on the location there. Um, during the twenty eighteen presentation for I Love Kickboxing, I believe this property was uh, presented as C one on there. Um, as for the parking use studies, two and forty-five spaces. Uh, any one of you who uh, chooses to use Google Earth can count numbers higher than that in the seven different photos uh, presented of that parking uh, parking lot there. Um, seventy-one percent utilization is what they have there. I would, I would suggest that I would suggest that the COVID pandemic will not be representation of the, and I certainly hope it will not be representation representative of the uh, usage of that parking lot facility. Um, Hickey, both sides always packed. That parking lot is always packed. I would also suggest that um, the alcoholic beverage control is saturated by the state for both the census tracts this property is located for.
Thank you, Mr. Stedgen. Next speaker, please.
We have uh, no more hands raised.
Well, we'll go ahead then and I will give the applicant, I, I know you didn't use all ten minutes. Care to address the matters that were raised in public comment, you can have two minutes to do so.
Good evening. Um. I guess related to the firearm sales that was already in C two, we're gonna leave it on the conditional permitting side. So if uh, if a request for a tenant comes in for that and, and we feel comfortable with it and from merchandising standpoint, you know, they'll go through the appropriate process, but I'm not requesting uh, that now. Um. The other items related to the traffic, uh, I would defer to our local team. Um, Mr. Banks or uh, Mr. Northart, if you want to address just that quickly. Um, my understanding is we provided what was, what was required to be provided.
Right, this Curtis Banks with Urban Planning Partners. We weren't requested to provide you know, the full range of the traffic analysis. The request was to look at the proposed uses and what would its impact be on the amount of traffic or cars coming to and from the center. And that is, that is what we provided. So uh, that is, that, that's what you have as, as part of your packet. This work was done before COVID, so the parking analysis was prior to COVID. This request has been underway for quite some time. There was a pause during COVID. But we have looked at the, the worst-case scenarios from, from that standpoint. The information was provided, the parking was looked at over a period of time at different points during the day. So you have the worst-case scenarios before you.
Curtis, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks, uh, Mr. Zeig. Let's see here. I, I guess then that will bring us back to the, uh. Commission and Commissioner Hauser, I guess we'll start with you since you've got your hand.
I'm so sorry, before you especially, um, close the public hearing, and maybe this is just me having technological issues, um, when, um.
I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Sorry, um, I may be just having a technical issue, but when staff mentioned that there were no more hands, I saw three additional. Hands of the public go up and I just want to make sure that, um, we don't have any sort of issue with representation. I may be wrong.
Well, what, no, honestly, I didn't, I didn't notice that. So why don't we go ahead and take a step back? Um, I did see, uh, you know, a moment ago, a hand from. Like maybe a Ms. Duran that was, uh, kind of up on the screen. So I was a little, uh, I wasn't sure if that was a staff member or a. Consultant, maybe, uh, Ms. Warmaester, you could, you could help us with that.
Sure. So Ms. Ms. Duran is a member of the public and, um, I think I was trying to promote a consultant and. Sometimes these jump around. I think I promoted Ms. Duran. Um, her hand is, was up and now it's down. So if she'd like to speak, she can put her hand back up. But in the meantime. Um, I have a Gil. Who, uh, is able to speak.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead then and, uh, sort of adjust the order, um, uh, in deference to, uh, members of the public who got their hands up late. Um, Jill, why don't you go ahead?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, you've got a pretty bad echo. I, hopefully you can do something about that.
Sorry, um, can you hear me okay now?
No, not okay. Jill, why don't we do this? Why don't we give you the opportunity to see the conflicts and technical issues? Maybe we'll see if Betty, uh, is prepared to speak. We'll come back to you.
Ms. Duran is, uh, able to speak now?
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead, Ms. Duran.
Oh, my goodness. What a scare. I thought I wasn't going to get the opportunity to speak this evening. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I would, uh, I, I'm quite nervous about, uh, this, these, um. Uh, proceedings. I would like to say that I have great, great concern about item number five, the cannabis store and the firearm store. And parking is a great issue. I live about two doors down from this, um, shopping center. What I'd like to say is I've been through, this isn't my first time at the rodeo, folks. I think you're going to know this. And while conditions, uh, elements that it may be conditioned, that sounds great, but when you get an element that's conditioned. And the conditions aren't met, you live with it. This community will have to live with it. I'm thinking also about, let me see if I can find my place here in my notes. I couldn't get you. I was afraid I wouldn't even be able to make the comment. You speak about the general plan. Let me think. Here it is. The community design element policy number one, to preserve the unique qualities of the city's neighborhoods. This will not. Per, uh, this will not preserve those unique qualities of this neighborhood. The land use and development shall protect and enhance the individual character of each neighborhood. These two things, specifically, there are others, the cannabis store and the gun store are not going to. Enhance the character of this neighborhood. I am concerned, deeply concerned. I am really exasperated by the fact that I see not just this. Particular thing come to planning commission, but others. And all we do as a city is go and appeal. Can't we get it right? Go, just coming out through the door. Can't we look at this and see what the community wants and what it does not want? My other concern, although I don't quite understand it, is the Firestone store. There's a, a section in here on page 56 that speaks something about. Perhaps eliminating it, although you don't say that in your permitted uses. So there's, there's some concern, but the main thing is. This really doesn't keep with the general plan for this neighborhood. It does not protect us and it doesn't end up and. Doesn't enhance the individual character of this neighborhood. I don't know about yours, but this is not what we want for our neighborhood. Thank you for listening to me this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Duran. Um, Jill, I think we'll, we'll try you again if, uh, see if maybe we can do this without the echo.
All right. Could you hear me now?
Yes, sir. You're, yes, you're, you're, you're good. Go ahead.
All right, well, um, Betty reiterated most of the things that I was concerned about. Um, but I would, uh, ask regarding, um, and I'm a novice at this and I'm not a. High-tech person. I'm 75 years old and it is bewildering to get even on the computer here, but, uh. Was it the permit process would allow them, uh, the, the shopping center. Uh, the ability to move in a new leasing, uh, without going through, uh, the planning commission. Is that? My understanding, is that correct?
So, so, uh, Jill, I'm sorry, we're not, you asked a question on this, but maybe after you're done commenting, we can, we can discuss issues.
Okay, well, uh, basically I would say that if, uh, if the, uh, the public should have the option. To be able to, um, um, bring a concern on any new leasing being added to the sto-, uh, to the complex. Uh, with, they should, uh, the shopping center should afford the public like a 90-day, um. Review, uh, 90-day period that noticed that they're going to, uh, add a new facility. And so, because such as things, uh, as like bars or, uh, cannabis clubs or anything like that. Um, I think would be challenged. Uh, I don't think we need in that shopping center to have. Uh, uh, facilities that, uh, could attract, um, criminal elements. There's enough crime up there already. Um, there was a massage pole there a few years back that, uh, turned out to be a, a prostitution ring. Um, we're located right near a freeway, so there's been a lot of, uh, crime committed where people can. Uh, get on skyline and take off to the freeway. And. Like I said, I'm sorry, I, I don't want to. Go overboard on this. Uh, business needs to be, um, make a profit. I understand that and, um. But certain types of business should not be in this neighborhood. We don't want to have it turn into a sleazy strip mall. If you understand what I mean about that. And I thank you for your time and I apologize for all the confusion here.
Thank you, Jill. Um, I, I see one other hand. I don't know if that's a leftover hand from, from Bolz who spoke earlier.
We do have one more person, uh, Ms. Christine Bowles.
Thank you.
Um, uh, thank you, Commissioner Hauser for, for noticing that we hadn't spoken and, and for allowing me to speak. My name is Christine Bowles and I live just down the hill from this project and shop here regularly for my family. Um, first I want to welcome the new owner and thank them for pursuing a proper plan development application so that everyone understands the allowed uses. I'm happy to see housing as one of the potential uses above retail. I'm disappointed that you're not looking at that now. But, um, given our lack of affordable housing in Pacifica, I would highly encourage you to consider these uses. As we strive to meet our regional housing needs allocation numbers given to us, these large flat sites close to services and public transportation are ideal. More west residents living just a few steps away will also increase foot traffic and sales to your merchants. Without adding to the neighborhood traffic, a win-win for everyone. I do want to question the parking study. Um. Uh, can you confirm what time of day this data was obtained? Uh, it said weekdays and weekend, um, uh, but not time. Um, it'd, it'd be interesting to hear our C A survey if other, uh, nearby neighbors agree and if things were different pre-COVID. Most of the time I shop here and, and right now with COVID, I'm limiting my shopping to just once a week, which, which is not normal for me. Um, but I'm there midday or early evening. Um, I can find a space, but I do have to hunt around. I have not seen a 30% empty lot. Except late at night when most stores are closed. Um, I saw on your plan some spaces along the rear, um, parallel to Skyline. Are, are these counted in the, in the total numbers? You're include, you're including, um, personally, I wasn't aware that those were available. So are they open to the public? And if so, are they signed as such? Um, I'm also curious as to whether, um, the outdoor seating that you're, um, looking to add to permitted uses would reduce available parking. The sidewalks seem too narrow to support dining and also provide handicap access right now. So I'm concerned about losing more parking. Um, and I know there's no application for a cannabis store tonight, but I'm hoping, um, someone from the planning department can clarify the city's limits on retail cannabis. Um, in, in other meetings I've attended, I thought that there was a limit of six cannabis stores in the city and three neighborhoods. Two per neighborhood like Sharp Park. Um, could someone confirm that? Is, is the Fairmont area? Indeed allowed to have a cannabis store per the, the city council's policy? Um, and then I just want to, um.
Thirty seconds.
Um, express my agreement with that Dan Stegans comments about not allowing gun sales in the residential neighborhood and about checking the records. Um, if indeed these are available, that seems like a major oversight, um, in the planning department, um, from 2013. And then, um, uh, uh, again, I agree with Vicky Sunstrom also. It sounds like the park, the, the traffic study was not done. Thoroughly and properly, and I would request that that be redone as well, um, so that we know that we have accurate information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Well, a-again, I think that there were a few additional points raised here and I'd ask, um. Mr. Zike, if you wanted another minute for his, him and his team. I think we're still under 10 minutes, frankly, from the applicant, if he wanted to. Addressing the issues raised.
Uh, good evening. Yeah, thank you so much. Uh, three key items. Uh, first one. So the, the parking study was completed pre-COVID. It was February of 2020. So it sounds like a lifetime ago, but, uh, it was actually three weeks before, uh, the world changed, if you will. So, um. These were taken, they were done at noon, 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM, both during the week and on weekends. Which as per the, uh, parking or the, uh, traffic guidelines are the recommended times to take shopping center parking studies. Uh, the last piece is related to cannabis and marijuana and firearm sales. Those are already in the C2, as I understand it. And they are still conditionally used, uh, conditional use permits, i.e. there will still be a process to go there. We are not applying for those. And we have almost 2,500 tenants nationally. We do not have a single cannabis store. We do not have a single firearm store. Out of 2,500 tenants, 105 shopping centers. So, uh, thank you so much for your time. Uh, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Z. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission. Um, and I guess I will ask at this point whether or not there are questions, comments, deliberation, uh, Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you. Um, well, first I want to thank, um, staff for a really clear and, um. Well-presented, uh, presentation. I thought the information was really, um, was really clear and I appreciate that. And I also want to thank, um, Mr. Zike and his company for their investment in Pacifica. Um. We had the prior property owner, um, present to the economic development committee a couple of different times and we had heard about some of the challenges with. Um, anchor tenants on what, you know, the leases, um, that those anchor tenants allowed for other. Spaces. And so I recognize that, you know, in addition to zoning, there are all of these other challenges that present themselves. Um, at a, at a shopping complex like this. And I, I think that, um. You know, I think this is a great location. I shop here a lot as well. Um, you know, I, the traffic study, uh, you know, was done by Kittleson, which is a very reputable firm. Um, so I don't know if my very subjective experience is helpful or not, but I've never had a problem parking there when I've patronized the shopping center ever. Um, with that being said, and I know that it's a conditional use permit, I do also feel uncomfortable with the idea of. Even a conditional allowance for firearms. Pacifica Play School, which is a preschool, is point three miles away. Sunset Ridge and, um, Fairmount West Park are less than half a mile away and we would be allowing. Child centers in the shopping center by right. So, um. I would appreciate, and I don't know where the rest of the commission falls on this, but I would appreciate, uh, if that. Use would be disallowed from the shopping center, which I think would be appropriate in the context of the neighborhood. Other than that, I'm fairly supportive of the proposal and I appreciate the work that Mr. Zike's team has done to, um, bring things kind of up to. Uh, current standard and that's where I stand.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Uh, Commissioner O'Leary.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I had a couple of questions and I guess a couple of comments. Um. First off, uh, I, I think the, the applicant mentioned that property in the back 305 Hickey. Um, I remember going there. I'm pretty sure it was a Comcast, uh, retail store and returning equipment there before they moved down the ceremony. So. I think that was a prior leasing probably years ago. Um, and I remember parking back there. So, um, at the time it was definitely open to, uh. To, uh, members of the public back there, but I do agree with, I think, the public comment that. A lot of people don't know about the parking back there. It, it looks like it was included in the overall count. Um, my second comment around is around parking. Um, I think the unique thing about, uh, this. Shopping center, maybe it's not unique about the shopping center, but there is zero street parking that is available. Um, it is red curb all the way around it and or, or traffic lanes. Um, so I think, uh, going forward as we. Look at this center, we definitely have to think about parking, um, and onsite, especially if, if there's ever, uh, residential, uh, bond to play. Um. I had a question around, uh, and maybe this is first, actually, so I guess these may all be for staff. Um, but I did want to ask whether the existing businesses onsite meet the existing permitted uses. Um, based off my brief view of the, um, conditional uses, it doesn't seem like any fall into that category, but also I'm not sure of every tenant on. On that site. So I wanted to understand if, if, do all the existing, um, businesses meet the current permitted uses?
Thank you, I'm muted.
Thank you. Um, yes, all uses are, uh, compliant with the exception of the Advanced America Alternative Finance Service. Operation located at 765 Hickey Boulevard. Under the, uh, so, let me just pull up the agenda real quick. I wanted to ask about the distinction between bars and nightclubs and, um. Some may see them as the same. One is under permitted and one is under conditional. And I was curious, um. As to really what makes, what's the difference between the two? Um, is it, is it, uh, live music or kind of what, what is that difference to tip it over from a permitted to a conditional, uh, use? Particularly bars and nightclubs. I think it was, um. Uh, item seven under conditional and, uh, item 13 under, um, permitted. Um, we'd have to double check this definition, um. To provide a more succinct answer. Okay.
Yeah, typically, to, let us, let us take a look at the definition. Typically, I think you hit what it is. It's typically live amplified music distinguishes a nightclub over. Over a bar, at least in a lot of cities definitions, but we could look into it, um, while we answer the other questions to see if this, uh, defined any further.
Okay. And then, um, my last question is something Commissioner Godwin brought up initially around the, um. Item 17 under the permitted, uh, uses renewable energy structures, particularly around the term structures. Um, are we. Are new structures which house, um, renewable energy. Um, basically a permitted use or, uh, for example, could they plot a structure in the middle parking lot that takes up zero parking? Um, and put, uh, a big battery in there, for example. It's, I'm not a renewable energy expert. Um, but. I, I'm, I'm curious as to, are we, are we proving, are we allowing permitted uses of new structures on the site or is it, am I misinterpreting that?
So I believe the, the term structure is actually used because that's typically a building code term because you need to get a permit when you obtain, uh, when you build a structure. Um, you know, I don't see that they would, you know, I, I can't. You know, obviously we can't foresee any type of technology that's going to be in the future. I think as we stated previously, we're thinking more of along the lines of. You know, car chargers, solar panels, um, things like that, not necessarily plopping down a, you know, a larger building in the middle of the, the parking lot.
Yeah, I guess the, the term there also related to that is energy storage. So.
Right.
What's an example of like energy storage from my knowledge?
So I, I, I'm not an expert in, in energy storage, but I do think it would be like battery type facilities that would store energy. So then you could, you know. Charge, charge cards or battery backups as well. So then you could, you know, charge, charge cars or battery backups as well for electricity.
Okay. I think those are all my comments and questions. Thank you.
And I can speak to the bar versus nightclub question. That, tho- those terms are from the existing C3, or sorry, excuse me, C2 zoning ordinance. And so under permitted uses, it says bars. Under conditional uses, it says, let me get the language here, social halls, clubs, theaters, and nightclubs. So I think that suggests a higher occupancy to me and potentially more noise. Like you said, amplified music. Although going to the definition section of our zoning ordinance, there is not clear differential definitions between the two.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of curious as to if there was any zoning definition this, to the distinction. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Godwin.
I wanted to respond to Commissioner Leo's question a little bit. Most of the energy storage structures tend to be battery stacks at the moment. But there are certainly hydrogen tanks and things like flow batteries, which are like vanadium dissolved in sulfuric acid, which provide a low-cost electric storage. And at least from what I can tell from this kind of terminology, it's, we're passing the responsibility over the building department of what are those things or other things to be developed that would be allowed on this site. That ends my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Well, I guess I had a question too, and I, this question may be for Ms. Waymeister, or perhaps for the, the applicant for that matter. Are there currently any limitations on hours of operation that are sort of baked into this, this PD, the specific PD zoning?
I would need to ask Mr. Garcia or the applicant if there are.
Within the outdoor dining, there are some restrictions on what is allowed for the business hours for outdoor dining or in CD. But I would ask the applicant regarding hours in general. The hours permitted for the outdoor dining is, I believe, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And I cannot speak for the businesses within.
Okay, we're, we're not actually aware of any specific limitations on hours of operation that are baked into the specific zoning here for the PD.
Not currently.
Okay. And then I had a question for Ms. Bazano, maybe. I, I, whenever we talk about firearms, I always get a little, well, I always want to make sure that we're, we're checking the blocks, we respect the Second Amendment, for example. And so we have a situation here involving, you know, firearm sales as a conditional use. I can't think of any particular reason why we couldn't, for example, strike that if that were ultimately what we wanted to do by way of a recommendation to the city council. But I was curious about whether or not you had any thoughts or concerns about that, given that we have a, you know, sort of a city zoning regulation that speaks to, I'm sorry, a city regulation that speaks to the matter.
Right, I think you've heard from staff, and I would ask them to reiterate if I, if I state anything incorrectly. That this, that gun sales are already a conditional use in C2. So they're already allowed as a conditional use in this commercial district, which is where this shopping center is located. So this requirement, conditional use permit is consistent with the C2 designation. So I think that including it in the master use permit is consistent with that requirement. It would require a conditional use permit, and as already discussed, that's a discretionary review process. So it would come back to the planning commission for discussion at that point.
So, but recognizing that PD is kind of its own specific zoning district, so to speak, I mean, is it within our discretion to do something that's narrower than C2? But by way of a lot of uses.
Yeah, I mean, I would have concerns about that because it is allowed in C2 as a conditional use permit. So if we're trying to maintain consistency with C2, then we would want to leave it in as a conditional use permit. And I don't know, and I would have, I would defer to planning staff, but just because we omit it from this does not necessarily preclude a tenant from seeking to add it later. And just to clarify, this is a planned development zone. And so I, I think we're using, just maybe to help frame the conversation, we're using C2 as a guide, so to speak. But I think, I think the question is whether or not it can be narrower than C2.
Yeah, I know that we were using C2 by analogy, but I was assuming that PD was kind of its own, that this has its own kind of rules and, and criteria. It might be different from C2. And so that was kind of where I was going with that, recognizing it.
Yeah, so just to clarify, Chair Nibblin, then it sounds like I misspoke, or I wasn't clear that, that that's the way I was intending to use that to C2. And we're trying to make, maintain consistency with C2 because it's the most analogous. So, yeah.
Okay, that, that, that is helpful. And I, and I guess the other thing I'd offer, just by way of commentary, I actually live relatively close, not that close, but probably within, certainly within walking distance if I feel like I want to go for a long walk of the, of the, of the shopping center. And I've, I've gone there for 15 years, 20 years since I've moved to Pacifica, and I use it regularly. And I've never myself ever had any trouble parking, with the exception of when construction was being done there. Would, I don't know, whatever it was, two or three years ago, maybe it was a little more than that, like five years ago perhaps. So I, frankly, I'm not of the view that parking is an extraordinary issue. There is occasionally difficulty sort of making a left turn out of the parking lot sometimes into, you know, to, to get out of there. But I haven't noticed it being a dramatic or extraordinary issue. So that's, again, for what it's worth anecdotally, that's, that's been my experience. Commissioner Domarot.
I kind of follow up on, on the chair's question. Does C2 provide constraints on where something like a arms store or a cannabis shop or a liquor store can be located in a neighborhood, neighborhood type environment? In other words, you would think you'd have to stay away X amount of miles or feet from certain kind of communities for certain kinds of, of, of kind of commercial businesses. Does C2 define all those things?
Thank you. And I'm, I just actually asked the last question, I was pulling up the municipal code. Under firearm sales, the location, it says, a look, a use permit for firearm sales activity shall not be approved if the proposed business premises are located within, within 1,000 feet of a legally operating public or private elementary, middle school, high school, or where a legally operating preschool is located, or within 500 feet of any other firearm sale. So there are some radius restrictions on where it could be located.
And I, I wanted to add to that for the cannabis sales. This is a, a cannabis overlay zone area that the council designated. So I, I would not recommend that, that, that use be removed. But I can say that there are a limit of six in town, and they, the six have been permitted. So unless one of them closes or otherwise relinquishes their cannabis license, another one would not be able to be permitted here. And also, similar to the firearm sales, there's also radius requirements and distancing requirements from schools and other sensitive uses. And so at the time an application comes in, because as you know, those uses come and go and move around sometimes. Maybe not schools so much, but sometimes daycares. Then, then we would analyze that at the time the application's made.
Thank you. Commissioner Domarot, do you have other questions or comments? Thank you. Commissioner Godwin, I think I see your hand back up.
I'm just not taking it down. I won't do that now.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser, how about you?
And my, mine's, mine's intentional. Well, first, Chair Nibblin, I want to thank you for always keeping us honest and making sure that we're thinking about the bigger picture. Because yes, I, the Second Amendment is important, so I, I appreciate the question. And I also appreciate Commissioner Domarot's point about the, the proximity is, I think that's a really good point. I think, you know, I, I kind of feel, you know, I feel like what Ms. Waymeister said makes sense of not, you know, removing anything for the cannabis sales. But again, you know, I think looking at the fact that this is a PD and looking at the fact that as a permitted use, as one of the listed permitted use, and I don't have the chart in front of me right now, we have childcare centers of a certain size. And so I think just by, by nature of, of one, it should preclude us from doing the other. And so again, I, I I, I don't want to, I, I'm supportive over all of the application, but I would like to specifically see this, this use excluded. So I don't know.
Commissioner Hauser, you know, my, my perspective is that because it's a PD zone, it's not necessarily the case that we have to incorporate everything that C2 allows. It seems to be where the law comes down on it. So I'm not actually opposed to your proposal if, if that were the direction the commission was a whole while ago.
And the one thing I'll add to that is, I do think there's some correlation between the two. The fact that C2 does not allow daycares by right, you need a conditional use permit. This would allow daycare centers by right, which are not allowed in C2. So you could make the case that there should be further restrictions on conflicting uses.
That's a great, great point. And I also appreciate that daycare centers would be by right. I know that that's one of the uses that's very underserved in Pacifica and San Mateo County at large.
Well, at this point, you know, I don't see other hands for deliberation. Mr. Leo.
I'll just add a comment that I'll be in favor of removing the firearm sales. So I support that.
Excellent. Well, you know, I, not to, not to be presumptuous, but perhaps as a point at which it might be appropriate to call, to, to call the question or to, basically, I believe the motion would be ordered if someone's inclined to make one. Commissioner Hauser.
I would be happy to make a motion if no one else has any comments.
Please go ahead.
And I move that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and recommends approval of the development plan DP-83-21 by adopting the attached resolution and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference, with the one change that firearm sales would be specifically excluded from the development plan.
Okay, Commissioner Hauser, thank you for your motion. Everybody understands it. Or if not, let, let us know. Otherwise, is there a second? Commissioner Leo.
I'll second the motion.
Great, well, we have a motion from Commissioner Hauser and a second from Commissioner Leo. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Domarot?
Yes.
Chair Nibblin?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, we have a unanimous vote to approve that, that motion, so we'll then
Chair Nibblin?
Yes.
Just to clarify, the vote was six with no nays and one absents, correct?
That is correct. We had all six out, present commissioners voted in favor and one absent. We have no consideration items. Actually, let me, let me state this because sometimes I forget to. Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision and write it to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court issues which may be raised or limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing, judicial review of any city administrative decision will be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Since this is only a recommendation, my guess is that's probably, well, I'll let the city attorney correct me, but I, in any event, this is a recommendation. We'll go to the city council for final action. So it's going to the city council anyway. No consideration items, communications, I'll ask if there are any commission communications. Seeing none, I'll go to staff communications.
I know communications, Chair.
Thank you. That then will take us to adjournment. I'll ask if there is a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hauser.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn, Commissioner Domarot.
Second.
Motion in the second, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Chair Nibblin?
Yes.
Mr. Domarot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Okay, so we are unanimously in favor of adjournment with one absence. So everybody have a good night.
Bye.